School board of board, please join me in front of the president.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, you believe state report.
Jamie. Jackson. Clark.
Here.
John.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Alicia.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. At this time, do you have a motion to approve your agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Alicia and a second by Clark. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both say aye. At this time, we have an election of the school board officers. The school board will elect officers for 2022. Any member of the board may nominate any other member of the board, and nominations do not require a second. First up, we have a nomination for chairperson.
I nominate Parker.
I nominate Alicia. Tell them you have a nominee for chair.
Yes.
Do you plan that?
Sure. I just told last year that we should all take care, so I left him to Mr. Schur or Jonster.
Hmm.
And I was thinking, I think maybe keeping like switching up like every two years, I don't know. Maybe be a good keeping it a two year. So that's kind of fine. But but thank you for the nominations.
Do you have any more nominations for the board, for board chair? John moved to nominate Jason for position of school board vice chairperson. After the third call, interim chairperson will close nominations for the office. If one candidate is nominated for the office chair, interim chairperson will declare the candidate by acclamation and direct the clerk to report in the minutes. I believe that's it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna. At this time, we need nominations for vice chairperson.
I'll nominate Alicia Lockard for position of school board vice chair.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Third call for nominations for vice chair. Clark moved to nominate Alicia Walker for position of school board vice chairperson. Chairperson will close nominations for the office. If only one candidate is nominated, it will be declared by acclamation. At this time, we need nomination for clerk.
I'll nominate Donna Walker for clerk.
Any other nominations for clerk? Third call for nominations for clerk. This time, I'll close nominations for the office. One candidate was nominated and will be cleared by acclamation and direct the clerk to report in the minutes. Donna, do you accept?
Yep.
Thank you. At this time, I have all key nominations for treasurer. Second call for nomination for treasurer. Third call for nomination for treasurer. John Lukey moved to nominate Clark Christensen for position of school board treasurer. There was no other nominations. They will be elected by acclamation and direct the clerk to report in the minutes. Thank you, everyone. At this time, we'll go to announcements. The next school board meeting will be on Monday, February 14 at 7:00 PM in GSL School Community Room 443444 unless the board changes meeting time of day. Donna, what's your opinion?
I do actually have a couple of acknowledgements, and I'm going to stand over here real quick to do this. Last month, unfortunately, but also thankfully, that nobody was hurt, we ended up having a school bus accident. And thankfully, nobody was hurt. But we had a couple of people that just stepped up and really did just a wonderful job. And I think it's important that our community and our public get recognize the fact that they did such a great job of this. The first person that I would like to nominate, or not nominate, but to to recognize is Mary Bilkey. And Mary was the driver. Mary was calm. She was cool. She was collective, and she was caring more above and beyond everything else to to make sure that that situation was handled in the absolute best situations possible. And the second person that I would like to recognize is Tina Tuber, who is the director of our transportation. And she was on the spot helping out amongst many others, our first responders, we obviously need to recognize. But these two people deserved the recognition and just took a situation that was not, obviously, what we want to have happen. But took that situation and were just there for our students and made the best out of it. And I just want to say thank you for your service to GSL and their students. So come on up, you two. I'd like to give you some. Thank you very, very much. And thank you very, very. Yes, let's have a picture. From you guys, thank you.
Mary, my kids were worried to death about you.
They were what?
They were worried to death about you.
Oh.
So you always picked them up at first, and you developed a pretty special relationship with them. They were worried about you. Everyone's happy that you do.
And now that we're, you know, still on acknowledgements, you know, Darryl is also in the in here as well. And just along with all of our bus drivers, they are, they're doing a great job with mandating or trying to follow the mandates, trying to make sure things are there. But our our kids are coming to and from safely every single day. It is a task that sometimes get overlooked because it needs to be perfect every single day. And and sometimes you you just kind of think that it's the norm, right? And I just want to say thank you to our bus drivers because they do do a great job on a day-to-day basis. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other? On to any other acknowledgements? At this time, I'll ask for public input relating to the agenda. Second call for public input relating to the agenda. And third call for public input relating to the agenda. Reports and presentations. We have Gillian Hansen from US Solar here to to represent to us. They're looking at a, I guess, looking at possibly signing up at Lakeside School for some solar energy.
Perfect. Can you guys all hear me okay? Awesome. Well, first of all, thank you so much for having me. I'll try to keep this pretty short as I know you guys have a lot that you need to get through. And I just really want to say, you know, from my perspective, I'm really honored to be here. I know that schools have faced quite a bit in the past couple of years. My sister is actually an elementary school teacher in Indiana, and I've watched her have to kind of struggle through all of this. And so I'm hoping that this opportunity can bring some benefits to your school and something positive, as I know that's kind of far and few between recently. So just thank you so much for having me. So yes, I'm here to talk about a community solar subscription specifically for your Lakeside Elementary location. For example, that's the only location that is eligible as this program is specifically for XL Energy customers. And that's the only school that is an XL Energy customer. Hoping that eventually this program will become available to other utilities and co-ops throughout the state. But today, it's just the Lakeside Elementary School. Before I kind of dive in, I just want to kind of reach out. Is there anyone that has any questions to start off? Okay, awesome. So just a little bit about US Solar. So we are based in Minneapolis. Many of us are U of M grads, still living right close to the campus. So we're super local. Minnesota is kind of our bread and butter. It's where we started in 2014 when the community solar program started here. The Minnesota Community Solar Program is the largest in the country and was one of the first. There's a lot of other community solar programs that are popping up around the nation that we are now developing in, including Colorado, Illinois, New Mexico, Maine, Delaware. The list kind of keeps on growing every month, really, it seems. But Minnesota is one of the first, and we do have over 100 megawatts of operational community solar here in Minnesota. To give you context, the program cap as it stands now, our projects are one megawatt, each individual projects. And they are about 10 to 7 acres in size. As technology gets better, we're able to shrink the acreage that's needed, but the projects are one megawatt. Some of the projects that we built in the earlier years were five, so we have about 80 projects, individual projects across the state, all in XL Energy territory. We are a full-service provider, so if you have heard from other community solar developers, there's quite a few in the state, as well as, you know, a few national big names. Something that distinguishes US Solar is that we are the owner and operator of our projects, and we intend to be for the long term. So our business model is to sign the land lease with the landowner, develop that project, interconnect it, build it, and manage those subscriptions for the full 25 years. Some companies will do just a portion of that. They will develop the project, construct it, and then sell it off to a subscription manager. But we handle the whole process. So that really means we take good care of our projects. Because when we're building them, we know we're the ones that are going to have to deal with it in the next 25 years. So something if you are talking to other developers to keep in mind. So this is just a small map showing that XL territory. There is another rule in this program that you have to be in the county that the community solar garden is located in or in an adjacent county. So we're in McLeod County, so you could participate in a garden in Carver County and Rendell County, McLeod, and any of the other adjacent ones. But you can't participate in one that's all the way up in Clay County. So it does keep it pretty local. But as you'll see, we have projects that are eligible for everyone in XL territory in Minnesota. So we really do have a wide reach of our projects. And this is just a small list of some of the subscribers that we work with. So we do work with some large name corporations. Walmart subscribes, I think, 36 locations with us, as well as I listed on the side there just some of the school districts that we work with, just to give you context that we've worked with school districts all across the state, including some local ones like Cedar Mountain Schools and Rendell County Schools, as well as some of the farther ones away, Musica, Sartell. Any questions about US Solar before I kind of jump into the subscription basics? Okay. So just a quick walkthrough. I think this chart does a really good idea of what we're talking about here is a community solar subscription. So as I kind of alluded to, these projects are built off-site. So the projects that I'm talking to you today already have assigned land lease. They already have an interconnection agreement with XL and will be breaking ground here as soon as the ground thaws outside. So these are projects that are moving forward off-site, not on your building. There's no change in your electricity. And US Solar owns, operates, maintains, pays for that project to be built. The solar garden then produces energy that is sent directly to XL Energy's grid. So again, no change in your Lakeside Elementary's energy production. XL Energy then continues to deliver all of your electricity, but the difference is, is you now receive a bill credit on your electric bill for the value of those kilowatt hours that are delivered for your portion of the subscription. So it's really just a financial transaction. The garden produces electricity, and you receive a discount on your electric bill. You don't have to do anything for that. The other great thing about this program is that the bill credit rates are set and known for 25 years. So this was established in 2017. They've changed the program slightly to be the value of solar. You might hear it's VOS, if you ever see that, kind of in any bill credit related collateral called VOS. It's legislated by the state of Minnesota. It's administered by XL Energy and the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission. And every year, they've set these bill credit rates, and the project has a specific VOS year. So these projects that I'm talking to you about today, they were applied for interconnection in 2020. So they will receive this schedule of bill credit rates for the full 25 years, the VOS 2020 bill credit rate schedule. So in year one, for every kilowatt hour that's produced, you will receive about nine and a half cents off of your electric bill. We are offering a special offer for Lakeside Elementary. So our normal kind of standard subscription offer that we offer to residential customers, to our commercial customers, is a penny off of that bill credit rate. So that means XL would discount your electric bill for about nine and a half cents. You would pay US Solar eight and a half, and you would save a penny. We're offering a slightly larger discount where we're doing a penny 15 off of the bill credit rate for Lakeside Elementary, as well as we are offering a donation. We like to do this with the public schools that we work with or private schools that we work with. So it's a $2,500 donation. We ask that you use that maybe to advance any sustainability initiatives that you might have. Maybe you want to start recycling program, or if you wanted to do a field trip out to one of our solar gardens, you could use that for funding. So there's no big stipulations around that. We just kind of ask. And then if you move to the next slide, I'll walk through the savings estimate, and then I will pause for questions. So this specifically breaks out what Lakeside Elementary is looking at. So I worked with Brady to get an estimate of your usage. So we get an estimate of your historic usage and what the building traditionally uses. We're looking about 333,000 kilowatt hours annually. Then you'll see in that chart, it might be a little too hard for you to see here, but I'm happy to circulate this PowerPoint. You'll see that on that first line, you've got the subscribed energy. The second line, you've got that bill credit rate from XL Energy at nine cents. You've got the US Solar subscription rate there that is a penny 15 less than that. You're saving a little over $3,500 in year one. So it really just breaks out to kind of an annual savings, looking at that. I'm happy to provide monthly savings. But it's really just as simple. For every kilowatt hour that's produced at the garden for your subscription, you're saving a penny 15. Do you have any questions on those numbers, those savings estimates? Or how that works? Great. So I think, you know, the the value of participating in this program, you have the sustainable and renewable energy benefits. Another thing that you could possibly do with your donation is we do have a dashboard where you can see the garden production throughout the day. And that is something that other schools have bought TV monitors with and put that in their hallways so that students can see that garden producing. You know, when you don't have a solar system on your roof or on your property, it might be a little harder to visualize those sustainability benefits that your school would be providing by participating in this garden. There is residential opportunities if anyone in your community and students or families wanted to participate in the garden alongside the school, and they would receive that penny off and save. And so that's really, I think, the benefits that this program provides, and you don't have to do anything for that. So that just shows kind of our dashboard. We're actually going to be updating that here in the next month to have a very pretty display page that I'm excited about. And this is talking about the residential opportunities. So I think I've pretty much covered it here. Really, the next steps is I provided kind of our form subscription agreement with those terms. So it would just be to review that. If you have any comments, you know, some things we're able to move on, some things we're not. So we just asked that, if there's something in there that's a red flag, tell us. We can usually, I can push our finance team to wiggle a little bit. So it'd just be reviewing that agreement. And then these gardens, as I mentioned, will be breaking ground kind of as soon as the ground thaws. And construction can kind of range between three to six months. So we're looking at definitely before the end of the year, you would start seeing these benefits, probably by the end of the summer. Okay, that was a lot and very fast, so please let me know if you have any questions. I also do have a couple of business cards, so if you need a minute to digest and ask me questions later, I'm happy to do that, too.
So do we know where the dirt is located already?
So the two that you're most likely going to be participating in are in McLeod County, so they would be in your county. I don't, off the top of my head, know the cities, but I can send that over to you. I have, there's a few in Rendell County, there's a few in Carver that I was talking to you about, but I think we will probably put you one in the Cloud County. Just if you wanted to ever do a field trip or something, it would be nice to have it local.
So it's not built yet?
It's not built yet. Yep. They will be breaking ground as soon as the ground thaws, so probably March, beginning of March.
There was an article in the paper last week about it. The condition use permit was declined by the Donmister's. Is this the garden they were talking about that?
No, to, these gardens both have their conditional use permits and interconnection agreements. And if the particular gardens that I'm talking about, they would be USS Verbena and USS Waterfell. If they were denied, we also have, I think, seven gardens going up in Rendell County. So even if we couldn't get you into those, we have plenty of opportunity. Though I will say, it it does fill up pretty fast. When I had originally reached out back in last May, I think we had three other gardens that have already filled up. That that was Helen and Water City and Watertown. Both of those gardens have filled since. And so it will move, and it will fill. You do have time. But if you want to see those savings, I would, you know, consider moving forward with those as soon as possible.
So there are gardens in this area already that you have, but they're all used up, is what you're saying?
Yes, yeah. USS Helen is the most recent one that's here in McLeod County. That one, I believe, CEO did or turned online back in December, and that one is completely filled. We try to fill them before they are turned online, so that on day one, everyone's receiving those benefits. So it's pretty common to have about a six-month to a year timeline, so you fill them as they start being developed and as they start being constructed.
Any questions for Jill? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And I'll leave a couple of cards here with Michelle. Just if any of you have any questions, like I said, I'm happy to email over anything specific about the projects. These ones are moving forward. So have a great night.
Thank you.
I told Gillian that kind of our normal procedure is for you guys to hear the information. Now you have time to read it over, ask more questions, reach out to us, or, you know, we can share her contact cards. You can ask those informations. So Gillian has been working with Brady since back in May. We've been approached by a number of different vendors with solar gardens. So Gillian is one that kind of stood out for Brady. And we've just been a little busy with COVID, and we've got, just haven't had time to deal with it. And we talked to the facility committee with Jason and Jamie, and we thought it would be a good idea for you, the full board, to hear her presentation and be able to decipher the information. And then we'll probably put it on the February agenda if we decide to move forward. So I'm going to let that, I can tell we didn't make that right there. Talking about the USS Verbena.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Happy to, I completely understand that it's been a year of, solar is not the priority. So completely understand any delays. So it was signed, the conditional use permit was signed by the city stewards. That is even, I saw it allocated, and I have it signed.
Thanks, Gillian.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.
At this time, we will move on to administrative mini reports. Oh, excuse me. GSL ID?
Yep.
Sorry. Mr. Gabkaz.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to talk about my favorite subject, technology. I truly mean this. I was trying to figure out an app title for my presentation. It was, obviously, We Made It 2022. Here we are. I'd like to talk tonight in this presentation about a couple of wonderful opportunities that we are currently part of. One being this pretty big, pretty important, pretty grand, awesome thing. Based on the distance learning, COVID, money is being thrown at public schools and entities hand over fist, which is good. The latest greatest, in my opinion, was the FCC came out with the Emergency Connectivity Fund Grant, where they had billions of dollars allocated to. And the "to" was, take the lessons you learn during distance learning, and how can we make it better? And so given that information, what we were able to do is to understand, one, what it is. Where they adopted this back in May of 10 of 2021. The Universal Services Co-op that I add here is the program administrator. We're very familiar with them. We use USAC as it's commonly affectionately known, as the basis and tower of our E-rate. And we'll talk a little bit more of that, too. Okay, so what equipment and what services did the FCC grant cover? For off-campus use, this grant is for laptop, tablet computers, Wi-Fi hotspots, modems, routers, devices, anything that connects to the internet. The whole purpose behind this was they want to bridge the gap between lack of access. So as we found out during distance learning, not every child has a device at home. Not every child has access to the internet. In this day and age, you would think, well, that's crazy. Everybody has the internet. That's not true. So based on what we learned, you can go to the next. What I did is, working with my staff, Mike and Terry, we had to determine the need. Take the data that we learned, the devices that we issued out, the hotspots that we issued out, apply for the grant. And when I say they said it couldn't be done, our peers, when I was asking for what GSL asked for within the grant, they said, you're never going to get that. You're not going to get that. Well, my opinion is, you don't know until you try. So what I asked for was all of the hotspots that we issued out, our T-Mobile and our Verizon hotspots that we gave to and made sure every family had the opportunity to be able to be home and have that connection to the internet so they could do learning with us remotely. I got those all reimbursed for us this entire year at 100%. No questions asked. You do that again, it's all kind of 100%. 252 iPads I asked for to replace our aging devices in the K through 4. Because we've kind of adopted K through 4 as our realm of the Apple iPads. The 252 that I asked for will replace all those so we remain in a one-to-one environment in our K through 4 area, which is important. The big one is, I again took the math and we talked about it, and what would it take to bring our 5th through 12th grade to a one-to-one? The goal, of course, is to ensure that they not only have a device in the classroom if needed, but if we go to distance learning, we know every child will leave this building with a device. That number was 630 Chromebooks. From our 5th grade all the way up to 12, that also was approved. So we have funding for the hotspots, the 252 iPads, and 630 Chromebooks, fully 100% covered, no cost to GSL at all. Thank you very much. Where we are right now, 5th and 6th grade. Where we are right now, 5th and 6th grade are done. For them, it's basically taking the iPads out and replacing them with a Chromebook, because again, we went K through 4, Apple iPad. 5th through 12, Chromebook is our go-to platform. This morning, I met with the 7th through 12th grade team. Matt, Dan, Sarah was in the meeting with us. We have a plan. So that plan for me is just basically following Matt, working with Matt and his team to understand, what do you need, how do you want to roll it out, how are we going to get these devices into the hands. Many things were talked about, flushed out, but I believe Matt can respond to this as well. I think we have a plan, and moving forward, I think it's a good plan. Working with Michelle, we're gonna... Pretty good ahead of you here. Wasn't that timer going on? Rappel ups are... No, we look at, for the first time ever, GSL applying or asking our parents of the district and students to agree to insurance or a tech fee to cover the device damage if there are any. I think last time, Michelle, we looked at it was like $15 per per raid, per device, which, if anything happens, which we know it's going to, taking the lessons we've learned in distance learning, it gets fixed, no questions asked, we can quickly turn around and hand that student another device. And again, ensure they have that device either here or at home to do that distance learning. So I think we're good with that. Okay, now we can do it. I'm sure, I'm sure this is good. Okay, so we talked about USAC. We talked about how the connectivity grant is going to help us. This is the other one that every year, we go through E-Rate. E-Rate is a program that will return investments to us. I believe it's 67%. Right now, it's based on free and reduced, so certain Category 1 or Category 2 items, I'm not going to bore you with all the details. We can go out and apply for what we need, put it under E-Rate, and they reimburse us back 67% of that. What we're looking at, as an example, would be starting a 4470 in the E-Rate process and saying, okay, this is what we want. It gets approved, then you move on through the process. I talked to Michelle. She was really happy with this one. Our core switch in our main data closet, which everything comes intact to that. It's very important to show everything here, okay? That's the big thing. That would cost us to replace, upgrade, all that stuff, $250,000. To say it's a very big, very important piece of machinery is an understatement. Again, everything comes back and connects to that. But again, we don't have to do this, but if we were, that 470 starts the process. If approved, we buy that, you get 67% back on that purchase. So for big-ticket items, for us to be able to line this up and put it toward E-Rate is just a great benefit that they give us. We're looking at access points. Do we need to add more access points at any of our building? Right now, I think we have a ticket or two that we're dealing with at Lakeside, that is kind of referring to a working, it seems really slow. So our response to that is to research and understand, is it an additional access point? Is it moving the access points? When we first started laying out our Wi-Fi presence in all of our buildings, it was about, well, we know we need one here, we know we need one there. I think the new model is one per classroom to ensure that saturation, connection points. 471, that starts again that process once they're approved, and then the 472, the one full bear, that's when you apply for that reimbursement and you need it back. In the rearview mirror, distance learning. I see both good and I see bad. And we have to take those lessons learned. So there were very, very good things that happened through distance learning, and there were very, very bad things. And what I mean bad is just learning opportunities. What can we do as a department? What can we do in our classrooms to be better at that distance learning? I think it was good for the staff to go through that, to understand that, you know, when we say digital day, we're not here, and we're over here now. How can we make sure that that education that we are to give these students every day happens, and it happens in that same manner as if it would happen as if you were here in that classroom? COVID, I do see a light at the end of a very long tunnel, and that's good. I see positives coming from all of that. And again, I think the distance learning thing, we learned a lot of valuable lessons. Those are the two big things that I wanted to talk about, so that you can kind of understand the grant, which I think is very awesome news for GSL to get that. I think E-Rate gives us a lot of other things. If I can take just a few more moments before I leave, I'd like to share with you a personal note, if that's okay. Okay? I got a microphone, so yeah. On a personal note, my youngest son, graduate of GSL, was in, last year, a member of the Minnesota National Guard. So due to, when I say, boy, is it nice to have this in the rearview mirror this year, when we first found out he was deployed for the rights, that was great news for Mom and Dad to hear. Wonderful, have fun with that one. Then, and I didn't know this was possible, he was, went from National Guard to active army. In the blink of an eye, you raise your hand, you swear in your gun. And what I mean gone for us, he was deployed to the Middle East, March of 2021. This week, they won't tell you what day. It's super top secret, but he'll be flying out of that. He's done. And what I wanted to share on a personal note, this is where I just wanted to share, they sent pictures of, he was sent to Kabul, Afghanistan, and we all saw on the news that where they're getting the refugees home. If you look at this, the one on the left side of your screen is night ops, when these planes were landing, so red lights. Each kind of little profile, you can't see it. The others in the day, they don't really care, but they bring a lot of stuff that needs to get done. Next one, Michelle. This is, again, on the left, you see the refugees, where they're getting ready to get on these planes to get out of there. I asked my son and a couple other guys, we can stay in contact with them, what is the most single wonderful thing, or most awesome thing, or scary, about your deployment? To a person, it was the flight in and out of Kabul. And if you see that, that is one of our C-130s. All those little things that look like fireworks, that's actually countermeasures to any incoming missiles. So when you're going in or taking out, you throw those things to make sure the missiles go through them and not your plane. So imagine taking out from Minneapolis-St. Paul Airport, and that's what you have. What was he there? What was it? What was it worth? Michelle, the next picture. This. I asked my son, and he said, "Dad, I would stay in heart, to protect these people and help these little girls and all these people get the education of the things they want." It warms your heart, it makes it like, it's not okay, but you get it. And then finally, the one last picture, that's my son, GSL graduate in the middle. And again, sometime this week, he'll be home. So I personally am glad last year is back, and I'm looking forward to this year. So any questions? That's a family picture. Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to administrative and media reports.
All right, thanks, Jason. And thanks, Jeff. As you can hear, everybody's busy. Jeff's busy with all this E-Rate stuff. Brady's busy when he handles the building stuff and the solar stuff, and it just keeps piling on, and you try to get stuff done in between the COVID stuff. So just a couple of things I want to report on. The one item on the agenda is pay equity, and I'll talk about that when we get to the agenda item. I've been working on our RFP, our Request for Proposals for our Food Service Bids. We have to bid that this year. It's in the hands of the Department of Education right now. They have to approve it, so it's in a draft form right now, waiting for them to approve it. And they have a couple more pieces of data that they have to give us to go into that RFP. We're hoping to have that on the March Board Agenda for Approval of a New Contract for Food Service Management Company. Also starting to work on the Brown's contract, waiting for Mike Henick and Bob Becker to get back to me on a meeting date, so we'll start working on that. And then I'll involve the Facilities Committee in that, as well as the Food Service Bids to review. Our Food Service Review will happen in April. That will be a desk review, and then they'll also be onsite. At this time, it's scheduled to be onsite unless things change. That'll be the end of April, a two-day onsite review. We're also working on the facility projects for this summer. We've got a few things locked in place, and we'll be finalizing a few more things, waiting for a couple more bids to come in. And then our Facilities Committee is also going to be meeting with Mike Nelson from Dasher to review their contract and look at a couple things in that contract. Any questions that you might have? Revised budget is also being worked on. I should have that ready for you by February. At this point, when I reviewed today's number, I know Chris asked me last week, "How's the budget look for next year?" And I said, "Who's look for next year's budget? Not me." Currently, this year's budget, from what you had approved back in June, our revenue budget is up almost $1 million, about 5% over what we were. Expenses are up about $1 million for, an increase of about 7%. Now, we've got most of what we feel we're going to utilize in our ESTR funds dropped into those numbers, and that also includes all our adjustments for contract negotiations that have been done up to this point. Also includes any new staff that was hired, that you include as a board. So still looking at heading this year at about 23% fund balance. So we're still in really good shape. I know some days it feels kind of grim, so we'll keep working on that, keep trying to adjust those budget numbers as the ESTR numbers seem to change every other day as far as what we're doing, what we're getting, and all this. So we'll keep trying to stay on track with that.
Thank you. Principal reports. Ms. Butler, you want to start it?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Michelle, and good evening, everyone. You have a report in front of you, and also, right, some of the highlights. Our after-school programs are starting this week, Lincoln Learners at K through 2, Panther's After School, at Lakeside. Joy and I will be traveling to Olivia on January 25th to take the next step in our Instruction and Coaching Grant, looking at productive and efficient PLCs, structure, protocol, going back to the basics and building from there. One of our new initiatives, if you look down under Pro PBIS Responsive Classroom, OVAIS, is Peaceful Bus. I'll be meeting with Tina later in January to start working on that. And the whole premise behind Peaceful Bus is to build a school community and bring that school community onto the bus. So there's lots of research behind that throughout the nation, where schools have implemented that. So I'm looking forward to taking that step. If you go down under Curriculum and Assessment, we're beginning our Winter Academic in Behavioral Benchmarks, and our Report Card Committee will meet on January 18th. We want to take a look at that every year or two, and make sure that we can make necessary improvements to standards-based report cards. See Title 1, really not much has changed on Title 1. I keep the numbers on there, so that I have them as a reference as we look into next year, when I work with Michelle on the title budget and the title narrative. Special education. We're starting to look at caseloads for next year. We'll start with preschool, looking at what our names will be there, and then move those kids up, pre-K to K, and so on, and looking at assigning cases to case managers, looking at necessary parent support. And that typically starts end of January, early February. Can look at school community partnership. We could breed those. We did meet after-school with kindergarten team and kindergarten round schedule for March 10th. And just some acknowledgements. Teaching staff, all the committee work they do, going above and beyond with those, and our guest teachers, and all of our staff and our flexibility. We have four classroom teachers out today, so I want to acknowledge the substitute teachers who were in the building, and the flexibility of our staff as we work to get those covered. And, you know, thinking about Jeff's report and talking about the high-tech and the $250,000 server, I, you know, I want to mention something that's low-tech, and just as, or more important, we had a customer service, and I wanted to acknowledge Mike and Terry and Jeff. Mike came down today, fixed a smartboard for a substitute teacher. I know he was involved in something else during that, but came down, was there before he could blink an eye and got the kids and the teaching back on track. So thanks to our entire tech teams. What questions do you have? All right, thank you.
Good evening. I want to start by talking a little bit about the tech plan at the 712 level that Jeff spoke about during his presentation. So before I kind of talk about what we discussed this morning, I want to talk about how we've handled and approached this throughout the year thus far. Any student in 712 who's needed a Chromebook to go back and forth from school to home has let the office know, and we've communicated that with our IT department, and they've gotten them a Chromebook. So Chromebooks have been issued out to students who are in need, and they are going back and forth. If students do have a need for a Chromebook, but they haven't wanted to bring it home, they just needed them during schooling, Jeff and his staff have also gotten a cart of Chromebooks that's available in the Media Center, that students check out in the morning, and at the end of the day, they come back and check out a Chromebook. It's much like checking out a book. They do it on a daily basis. When we started talking about a tech fee or insurance, I think this is something that's imperative to have, especially when we're going to go one to one, considering the amount of damage that we've seen to Chromebooks over the last year during distance learning. This damage is not always intentional, as you might think. A lot of times, these Chromebooks are backpacks, they're set down, they fall off a desk. Things like that happen, screens break. And unfortunately, where we're at right now, just because of the cost to replace something like that, it's the full cost of replacement of a Chromebook. So we started talking about this tech fee, and where we're at with some things, with so many kids already having a device that goes back and forth, and then starting to talk about rolling this out at a grade level or at multiple grade levels, it started to get really confused as far as who's going to pay a tech fee, are they all going to pay a tech fee, students who already have a device, do they need to return that device or pay a tech fee? And it just started to get really messy. And what I talked to Jeff about is, I don't want to rush something because we have to. I want to do it in a way that's going to be best for our students. So what I had proposed to Jeff, and he agrees with his team, I want to add another cart into the Media Center that can be checked out on a daily basis, and then continue for students who have a need that have a Chromebook that needs to go back and forth from home, we can provide that for them. We haven't had a student request a Chromebook to go back and forth from home, probably since October, because we've just supplied what they needed already. So right now, what we're looking for is, we're looking at doing a complete 712 volo at the beginning of 2020 school, 2022 school year. I will be sending out Google Forms and emails as spring gets closer and as summer goes on, as far as who, number one, wants a device, and number two, letting them know this is what our tech fee is going to be. These are all the things that it covers. And I know this is way ahead of time, but basically what that tech fee is, is if a screen gets broken, they can bring that back. They put the Chromebook in a box, they ship it off to the company, the company fixes it, and they ship it back. And there's no cost to the student, because they've already paid for that tech fee or the insurance, whichever you want to call it. So that's kind of the plan right now at the 712 level, is students at my level have what they need right now. We are not holding anything back that we need. If there are current needs, those students come to the office, they talk to myself, or they talk to Beth, the secretary, and we give them those things. But again, we haven't had a request for a Chromebook to go back and forth from home since probably October. We are checking out about 30 Chromebooks a day from the Media Center, and there have been certain days where Chromebooks are all checked out. And that's where the idea came from of, can we add more Chromebooks to that cart, or can we get a whole other cart to supply in the Media Center, so we don't have to run out of them? That's kind of our plan for the remainder of this school year. Other notes to talk about here on my board report, I'm not going to talk about all of them, because I've filled this here. I'm going to highlight some of them. We have done in the past a PBIS kind of school celebration. We've typically done this in the fall. COVID obviously stopped that from happening last year. COVID obviously stopped that from happening last year. We are going to bring that back this year, and we originally looked at doing it last week, the first week back from Christmas vacation, and there's just a lot of things that are going on and getting kids back into kind of the rhythm here with mid-tris coming up. We're looking at holding that school celebration during Winter Fest Week, which is the week of February 22nd through the 25th. It's scary to think, but we're already talking about, thinking about, planning for the 2022, 2023 school year and the registration process. So our school counselors, Brittany Schmidt, Whitney Peters, and then our student support specialist Sarah Beckman have been working on updating our Registration Guide. They will be meeting with all students here at the end of January. And then at the beginning of February, all students will be updating their career plan on Infinite Campus, which is just a living document, as they go through ninth through 12th grade. They update this to make sure that they're going to end up with the courses that they need to pursue the career that they want to after high school, whether that's work two-year, four-year school, or military. They'll also be filling out a paper copy as well, so if anything happens, we can go back and make sure that they're in the registered courses that they need. The process from that is, they give myself and Dan some other numbers as far as which courses have been registered for, and we look at what we're going to offer next year as far as courses. What I mean by that is, if we have an A class that only has four kids that registered for it, that's a course that we wouldn't run, we would then reallocate those students into a course that was going to run that would maybe be a Woods class instead. That's how we determine our schedule at the junior high, senior high. We are unique at GSL in the fact that it's a student-run schedule, and I really like that we are a student-run schedule. It's a lot more work. I thank our counselors for the amount of time and effort they put into that, but at the end of the day, the courses we offer each year are the courses that students have registered for. Another thing that we're looking forward to at the senior high level is our ACT planning. So last year, ACT looked a little bit different, and as I looked at my board report from last year, I was actually presenting the ACT scores to you. And the reason I was doing that is because we offered the ACT in the fall because of what COVID had done. We're back to a normal ACT testing date, which will be the spring. We're looking at one of, a number of dates that we can do here at school, and then we're going to be looking at, are we going to offer the ACT here in school? We've done it a variety of different ways since I've been at GSL. We have offered it in the Purple Gym, where everybody who's registered takes it here in the morning, and then they're done for the day, or we have also brought them off-campus to St. Pius, where we've had them test there. So we're looking at the date, we're looking at the time. School reach will be going out to parents here in the next couple of weeks. It'll be going out before the end of January. That goes out to the parents of our juniors regarding ACT testing here at school. The other thing that I want to just briefly talk about as a board, and as we get closer to spring, I'll be talking more and more about this, is our summer school program. GSL historically has offered summer school program in conjunction with Waconia Schools. And the reason that we've done that is, Waconia is a qualified alternative large program, or an ALP. We have qualified our students under their ALP and run it through their targeted services. And it's worked both ways. It's revenue generating for Waconia. Our students get the credit that they would need here through the summer school. Myself and Brittany Schmidt have been looking at creating our own ALP here at GSL. And what that means is, we would no longer refer our students to Waconia for their summer school programming. Our summer school program will be run by ourselves. Our after-school ECL program, the Panthony Fair Dark Program, will be a part of what's called this Targeted Services Program, and in hopes that this would become revenue generating here for GSL as well. This is a lot of work. It's a big step here for GSL. I don't know that we've ever run an ALP on our own, but it's something that's, I've talked to Michelle about quite a bit since I've gotten here, I've talked to Chris quite a bit since I've gotten here, and Brittany has approached me as well, and it's something we're at least looking forward to right now and looking into. I know Brittany had a couple of phone conversations today with somebody who was at MDE about some of the things that we need to do, and you as a board, I'm sure will be involved in this process as we get closer, but I did want to just bring up to you that we are looking at creating our own ALP here at GSL. The other things that I want to note here, we have parent-teacher conferences this week on Thursday from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. And a little bit different for conferences this year, we're going to post our mid-tri grades on January 21st. Usually, mid-tri grades are posted prior to conferences, and it allows parents to come in and talk about those grades. I wanted to change it a little bit this year, so the parents have to come in, or parents have an opportunity to come in and visit with teachers before those grades are posted. So if a student is struggling, they can come in and speak directly with that staff member about, you know, why are they struggling, what are some things they can do before that mid-tri grade is posted on 21st. And then the last thing that I want to draw attention to, our National Honor Society helped raise over $13,000 during the Red Kettle Campaign after the Salvation Army and Descent went through their volunteer hours. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you.
With the mid-tri, so the cutoff date now is going to be after parent-teacher conferences, so mid-tri is going to be down to seven weeks then, instead of six?
Yeah, so when you look at how many weeks are in try two, it's not a perfect split. There's always going to be one more week on the front side or on the back side. So right now, we're going to have had seven weeks to the start of try, and then after mid-tris is posted, it's going to be six weeks after that, so that's correct.
Any other questions? That's Mr. Butler's report.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just be brief on a couple of things that I wanted to talk about. First and foremost, obviously, it's still in our world, we're still dealing with a lot of it. We do have the dashboard that has been up every week that we get into our cases so far at GSL. We've been averaging somewhere around 10, 11, 12 cases a week, and we do polls on our website for families to know. One of the things that we are looking at is to stop notifications for families in terms of that close contact. One of the things that we talked about was, you know, to have the families that still need that or would like that to opt in for that, but right now, when we're sending that information out, I think sometimes, you know, a lot of the families are reading it. Many schools have stopped notifying them on the close contact rule because it is something that kind of, we're living, people are, you know, you're kind of expected to watch your kids and to see how they're doing on a day-to-day basis. So we're looking at trying to do that, and I'll send something out to the families about looking at after the little break that we have here with Martin Luther King Day to kind of stop that, or to stop that notification. But again, we'll certainly work with families that need to have that information. We are still testing here at school. We average somewhere between two to 12 different tests a week for staff members that would like to get tested. Segueing a little bit into the policy that you guys are going to be reading about, and then just an update from the Minnesota OSHA standard or the ETS. We are working on that and spending a lot of time with Pam, with Michelle, with Beth Jarvik, our school nurse, and then our admin staff, of working on the logistics of all of that as we're planning, and obviously, everything is really fluid with the Supreme Court hearing that last Friday, not really knowing an update at this point. They're still telling you to just keep moving forward with that planning process of being able to deal with your employees and to keep your work safe, workplace environment safe. We'll keep you posted on that because it is fluid, but one of the things that you have to do is you have to have a policy, and that's where 491 is going to be in front of you guys here a little bit, and we can talk a little bit more about logistics with that. Looking ahead here at the end of January, on January 27th, we are going to have our Community Schools Group, and this is going to be our big one, where we're going to have our career conversations with our juniors and seniors of students, along with the group from the founder tomorrow will be here along with our Community Schools Group, telling their stories about their career. And then segueing into that, looking way ahead to April 14th, we are planning a Career Day and a Job Fair here at GSL, and that's going to be a part of our Community Schools as well, where we're going to have our community into our building. This was something that we had planned last year, but of course, COVID kind of took that out, but be able to have, you know, many of our businesses, colleges, whoever are going to be here and being able to meet with our students, and it's something that we've been looking at trying to do here for a couple of years, and so that's going to happen on April 14th. And then lastly, for those of you that are going to MSBA, we have that coming up here on the 13th and 14th, and we will leave a Lincoln Mercury line up on Sunday. And happy 2022. Here we are.
Thank you, Mr. Santi. At this time, do you have any committee reports?
You know, there's policy today, you're going to come ahead here with 491 policy. There'll be first and second reading on that tonight. You know, Chris just mentioned with all the coaches members, and it's going to be a lot of, I wonder a lot of people, this, we got to make a positive step forward, like Chris said, this has something available because there's a lot of great language.
Any other committee report? Last week, I had a chance to meet with a company, I wanted to meet with myself and Jamie, Shell, and Chris were there, and Brady was there, and Spirit actually on the wall, but we were, we met on SiteLogic, gave us this nice little book, but basically, what they do is they'll come in and do a complete facilities inspection and give us ideas of where we can save hours, help rate some of our projects that we could have in the future, like what's the most important thing, look at air handlers, look at lighting, look at water, do all kinds of tests. There's no charge for that. Basically, they get in, and then they have a dashboard, they call the dashboard, or I call it cloud, where they will put all of our information into that, where Michelle can access, Brady can access. We can look at projects that are happening. Now, I guess, I'll talk a little bit of fees. I mean, a fee would be basically a bit of a large project, they want to be the firm that helps us engineer that fee, that product, and that's their fee. We used to have a company that did a lot of that for us, and Michelle, you got anything else to add? Okay. Marcus, you do that?
Yeah, we've got a couple more of those books, if anybody's interested, just let us know, and we'll get that to you. The company, SiteLogic, only works with school districts. That's one thing that's really unique about them. They don't build hospitals, they don't build community centers, they don't build shopping malls. They only work with school districts. So their team that they have really specializes in schools. The couple of people that were there presenting to us, one was a former superintendent, one was a former athletic director, and then one of their engineers was there. So they have their own team of engineers, project managers, all that, right on staff. So they come in, they do this whole facility analysis, which the district has had done in the past, years ago, you know, they determine when they should build, or how to take care of home labor, all those type of things. Now, since we've done our building project, we haven't, like Jason mentioned, we don't really have a project manager or a architect or engineer that we can call anymore for different things, so we're kind of missing out on who do we call if we need to do something major that takes an engineer. So we've kind of lost those resources, so I think this would be a good benefit to have that resource back again. And like Jason mentioned, to do the analysis, they, it's free of charge, and they give us a whole big booklet on it and this dashboard, and then if we would do a big project, say we would do a big parking lot project again, which was kind of, we're done with that, but or say we want to finally tackle the HVAC system at the high school, it's going to be a million dollars or $500,000. They would assist with that then, they would help with the bid process, they would use their engineers to design that, they want to do the work. They would just help you through that bid process. They don't do it, they don't have a construction team that comes in and does that work, so you'd still have to follow the bid, the bid laws, but they would help you with that. They don't do the financing of that, and you'd continue to work with like Ellers Financial or Springsstead Financial, whoever your financial advisors are. So we kind of went through the meeting, and now we're just kind of digesting the data, and we are going to meet in and talk about it as a committee, and then hopefully bring more information back to you at the Board to kind of make a decision on if this is the direction we want to go.
Yeah, and just to follow up, it all started with just the facility analysis, you know, being able to have somebody come in that is a third party to completely take a look at everything that you have. Michelle and the facility team have done a great job of having that planned for the long-term facility maintenance, but this is somebody that will come in and take a look at everything and give you just data, it's just going to be really good to have as you kind of go forward with all of the different things that you have. It just gives you information to allow you to plan and accurately plan, even better than we're doing as we move forward.
Yep. One thing I like about it is, like I said, it's a database or a cloud-based thing that we can access, and if there's no more Brady at our facility or Michelle was, and we go to another career or life or whatever, we have that there that, you know, somebody new can come in and see that those projects we're working on, and it'd be a little easier for that person to do, so.
It's a good deal.
It's pretty good. All right. At this time, we'll approve the consent agenda. Motion. Motion by Alicia, a second.
Second.
I'll make that second. Please note, there is a addendum to the consent agenda. I got a motion by Alicia, a second by John, to approve of the consent agenda, all favor at least, signified by Saint I. I, same sign. Motion carries. There's no old business at this time, we'll move on to new business. At a main meeting time and place action item, the school board has traditionally managed a regular session the second Monday of each month at 7:00 p.m. at GSL, Schools Community Room, 403404. If required, the second meeting is held on the fourth Monday. Do you want to have a motion and discussion on any meeting times or places or any deals?
There was some discussion about time. I don't know. How did everyone, we talked about 5:00, 6:00, 7:00?
Yep.
I don't know, just a discussion.
We can make a motion and, you know, do the motion and discuss it again. I don't feel like to make a motion.
Make the motion. It's not the regular school board meeting, or the first or second morning, or the fourth Monday, now 6:00 p.m.
Go to the second. I'll make that second. You have any discussion? Time change. Still, the first and the second, there are meetings.
Did you discuss it last month or this year? Because I wasn't here because of, I could make a decision.
It was just, we're on the walk, you know, I had a discussion with Jason and Chris. We see each other, and we was talking the last month, I believe, I agree.
I think we had a discussion, and I was previously moving out, you know, there was some hesitation on that at that time, because of accessibility of the public, which was a legitimate concern. Back then, we didn't record the meetings, and we weren't posted online, and we were live, and things have drastically changed here, certainly in the last 10 years, in terms of the public's ability to participate in the man at home, not actively, if they were aware of that. I haven't been real supportive of going to a 6:00 p.m. meeting in the past, but given the accessibility factor, I have no problem with a 6:00 p.m. meeting in the presence of persons.
One other thing that always held us back a little bit was one of the previous director teachers' work schedule, and that, you know, we always kind of go, I did the best, we did an 8:00, 8:30, anything like that, and that's not factor right now, so. I might have 6:00 p.m. too.
Well, I'm kind of 6:00 p.m. too, but before we make a final decision like that, we should probably at least contact Jamie about it, because he works all the way down to Eden Prairie, and I don't know, I have no idea what time he gets back to Blanco. I have no idea, so I would hate to make a decision like that if he was unable to, you know, get back at that time, so.
I mean, I am underestimating that Ms. Charles Levin, and we do have a lot of those meetings at 5:00, and he seems to be able to adjust and make those adjustments, so.
4:30, a lot of times, school is back when we have our facility.
Yeah, last week was 4:30. I mean, we would have to do like a, a little background again. Right? Okay. So I have a motion by John, second by Jason, consent to regular school board meeting at 6:00 PM. Yep, on the 8th. On the second Monday, beginning at 6:00 PM. In the, uh, Community Room 443442. And if necessary, the next meeting will be held on the fourth Monday. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All the same side. Motion carries. Item B, Board Per Diem, action item. School Board's current approved per diem rates are as follows. Regular attendance at home board meetings is $2,600 per year. Per committee meeting is $35 per meeting. For negotiations, it's $50. Per additional paid for three hours for committee meetings or negotiation meetings, negotiation meetings is $35. Do you have a motion on this? Brady, do you have?
I'll make a motion, keep it as is, 2022.
Second motion by Clark and a second by Alicia, to set the per diem rates at the same rate as 2021. Any discussion? Are you done? Now, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All the same side. Motion carries. Appoint board committee representation. Uh, school board member Lendman, solicited board member preferences for committee assignments to committee and representatives. Recommendations for 2022 are enclosed. Do you have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do I have a second? By John. Um, did everybody take a look at your, did nothing want to change in here or anything like that? Anything, uh, anybody want to change in committees? That's all okay. Then I have a motion by Alicia, second by John, to adopt the committee status for 2022. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All the same side. carries. Item B, Payment of Claims Prior to Board Approval. Superintendent Sanji recommends that the school board authorize business manager Sanders to make payments prior to school board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next school board meeting without loss to the District of Distful Privileges and further authorize Sanders to initiate and transact electronic transfers for the purpose of investing excess monies and for payment with bond principal and interest as provided by Minnesota Statute 123B. Point 02 subdivision 18. Do you have a motion? Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Clark. To authorize business manager Sanders to maintain his prior to school board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next board meeting. Any discussion?
We do this each year.
Yep. All in favor, uh, indicate by saying aye. Aye. All the same side. Motion carries. Item E, Designating Statutory Duties of the Clerk. Is recommendations Superintendent Sanji that the following statutory duties of the clerk be delegated to the administrative staff, keeping in the book of minutes of all school board meetings, preparation of the reports that shall include the condition and value of the school property received and disburse, disbursements to detail, uh, and such other financial matters as may be called for by the Minnesota Department of Education. Length of the school term and enrollment and attendance at grades and the names and the post office addresses of all directors and other officers and such, other items of information that may be called by the Commissioner of Education. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? Second by Alicia. To delegate the statutory duties of clerk to the administrative staff as listed above. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All the same side. Resolución directing Superintendent Sanji to make reductions. Action item enclosure number three. If the school board plans to institute changes in the educational program in Lake Silver Lake School District 280, 2859, the first step in that change process is the adoption of a resolution directing Superintendent School District, the school district's administration to make recommendations for reductions, programs and positions and the reasons therefore. It is recommendation Superintendent that the school would adopt the resolution for 22, 2022, 2023 school. Roll call vote will be taken. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by John and second by Clark. To adopt and close resolution directing the administration to make reductions. Correct my recommendations for reduction in programs, position and reasons therefore for the 22, 2020, 2023 schools here.
And just remember, this is, does not mean that we're making reductions. It's just the first step in the process if there are going to be reductions as we move forward with the school planning process. But this is something that we do, we do each year.
Thank you. At this time, we'll, John, do you think the roll call vote?
Jamie is absent from clerk. Four against. Four. John, four against. Jason?
Four.
Alicia, four. And I, four.
Thank you. Item B, Set Meet and Confer. Action item. Traditionally made and conferred meeting has been held early in February to prepare recommendations for the school board about the upcoming school year's calendar. Superintendent Sanji recommends scheduling the meet and confer meeting on Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022, at 3:30 PM in the district office, board room. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do I have a second? Second by John. To schedule a meet and confer meeting as requested.
Again, traditional date that we have to discuss calendar, all of our calendars are on the school website. You can access them. Um, this will be discussion if we take a look at, if any type of minor changes for the upcoming school year, because that school year has already been approved. We will be discussing the following school year of what will be, and then this will be on the agenda for March.
All right.
February and then.
Yeah. Motion by Alicia, second by John, just to schedule a meet and confer as requested. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All the same side. Motion carries. Fundraiser request, action item enclosure number four. The board approves requests to pull fundraisers at the June meeting and at the January meeting. Superintendent Sanji recommends approval of fundraiser, fundraiser request for the second half of the 21, 22 school year. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Clark. To approve the fundraiser request as submitted. Anyone have any question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. All the same side. Carries. Uh, item I, Pay Equity Report, action item enclosure number five. Every three years, the district is required to file a pay equity report with the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget. Compliance report is attached. Superintendent Sanji recommends approving the pay equity compliance report for submission to the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. And a second?
Second.
By John. To approve the pay equity compliance report, uh, prepared for work by business manager Sanders for submission to the Office of Minnesota Management.
Yeah, the pay equity report, like, excuse me, Jason mentioned we have to do it every three years. And the main purpose of the pay equity report is to make, um, make you look at any discrimination that you might have for males and females. This process came about many, many years ago when they found that women doing the exact same job as men were paid less. So that's their, their main goal is to make sure that you're looking at that. So if you have, um, two pairs, one male, one female, and you decided, well, we're going to pay that male a little bit more because he maybe does more lifting or something, that would be a big red flag to them. In our case, we can't do that because we have to follow our collective bargaining contract. So the pay equity does not replace your collective bargaining process at all. Uh, it's just makes you evaluate and look at what you're doing. So I gave you a little bit of information on that. Um, it looks like we are fine, that we'll be in compliance. My next step now is to submit everything to the Minnesota Office of Management and Budget. And then they review that. We don't have any classes that, um, should fall out of compliance. They take a look at everything. When we look at that verification list, that's not just with the salaries, you have to include your health insurance benefit that goes into that as well. They look at the number of years that might be in your collective bargaining, um, contracts and how fast, if there was difference between how fast males or females, if it's a different class, how fast they reach that top level compared to another class. There's a lot of different components that they, they look at in there. So I think we'll be fine, we'll submit it and then it takes probably three, four months before we hear back from them. One thing that we do want to take a look at probably this summer is Chris and I talked. They haven't looked at it for, um, a few years. I think, um, last time we did the pay equity report was 2019. We haven't looked at our job ratings since about 2016. So I think this summer we're going to line up a meeting with, um, probably our personnel committee. Love to determine who's, who's best to look at that. Because of some changes in the 284 contract, we want to look closer at, make sure we've got everybody in the right job rating that they should. Because we've got a little change of, um, our interpreter position as well as our LPN's position. And in the 284 contract, we dropped that $22 million out of there. So we just got to tweak a couple of things on that job rating. Nothing that affects the pay equity report, it's just something internally that we want to make sure we're addressing.
Thank you, Michelle. Anybody have any questions? Stayed non, uh, motion by Jason, second by John. To approve pay equity compliance report as prepared by business manager Sanders for the submission to the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All the same side. And carries. Item J, First and Second Read of Policy Number 491, this is an action item. Is the recommendation of the policy committee to approve and adopt and adapt the following policy. 491 mandatory COVID-19 vaccination or testing and face coverage. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Clark, do I have a second? Second by Alicia. To approve and adopt policy number 491 mandatory COVID-19 vaccination or testing and face coverage.
Well, I'll just give you a couple more pieces of information. I talked a little bit about it earlier today. This is something that we obviously have to do. Um, we are going through the process and our recommendation to you guys as a board is to be able to have the vaccination or the testing and face covering. Okay, you could have an option of saying, hey, we're going to have a policy that says everybody must be vaccinated. But we're, we're recommending that the vaccination is, okay, if you have your vaccination, you're set. But if you don't, then this is what you have to do in order to make sure that the work environment in the workplace is safe for everybody. And that's the, the thing that's kind of behind this whole thing. Um, again, this is fluid, uh, but it is something that, uh, we have to do to, you know, show in good faith that we are preparing. And if the ETS is, is going to be into effect, that, that we are set. Um, we have already reached out to our staff to kind of give them information that says, well, here over the next couple of weeks, we would like you to confidentially let us know whether you're vaccinated or not. Uh, and once we get that data, then we'll go through the, the next process of figuring out how to test those people that have chosen not to. Uh, again, it's something that is confidential and it's something that is private. Um, and, and it's obviously a challenge that we're going to need to deal with. Um, but, uh, it is something that we are mandated to do. And then, of course, we sit here and watch and wait to see if this is something that will be mandated. Uh, it was read at the Supreme Court here on last Friday. And I have not heard anything at this point what the next step is. The plan is, is to continue to prepare and to continue to plan. And then that's kind of what we're doing here with having this policy or our plan in front of you as a board.
I just want to add, this is a federal OSHA requirement. This is not a GESL mandate that we're trying to put in place. This is coming from federal OSHA and then Minnesota OSHA has to adopt, um, the federal OSHA plan because Minnesota is considered their own OSHA state. And the ETS stands for Emergency Temporary Standard, um, to meet this requirement. Um, it's mainly having to do with workplace safety. And that's where this is being turned from, that people, um, in some companies, some organizations feel that they might not be safe because they're working with people that might be unvaccinated or unmasked. So that's where a lot of this is coming from. It's a temporary standard. At this point, because of when the federal OSHA put this in place, this expires in May at this point. That could change, but it's a temporary, um, mandate. So at this point, it does expire in May. You have no idea what's going to happen, even if it becomes a mandate right now, if it still expires in May or if it will go longer. So as you're well aware, like Chris said, this is very, very fluid, but this is a, a federal requirement. It's not a GESL requirement. And most of you probably all have heard of this. It, you know, affects any employer that has more than 100 employees, you have to follow this, this rule guide. So if you have 99 employees, you're fine, but COVID hits apparently once you have 100 employees. So, um, we're dealing with the politics of it all and, um, you know.
And we're working hard to make sure that, that we do find that balance. One of the things that, you know, we asked MSBA, because they kind of helped with this policy, is, is that if this is going to be a mandate that's coming from the federal government, what do you need a policy for if you have to follow it? And their answer is, because we have to have a policy. Okay. So that's why the policy has been made and they have assisted us with this policy or, or plan. And, um, you know, we'll just keep you posted on where things are at.
If we make it a policy, is it, and it doesn't become a mandate, um, then are we able to remove it?
Yes.
Because I'm not really having a hard time enforcing anyone to do this and, and even put a policy on the books if it's not required.
At this time, it's required.
The policy isn't required.
Yes, it is.
Then it wasn't required.
No, it is. This is when they told us that it is required, that we have this in place.
And if we don't adopt the policy, what is, uh, what is our penalty?
Fines. They, they could be fined.
Fines of what?
Oh, they, it would range anywhere from $7,000 to $70,000 depending on.
They said the other day, the first offense is $13,000 per day, second offense drops to $130,000.
What is the, what is the offense?
You're not following.
If you're not following their.
You're not collecting the data from your staff, you're not starting to enforce the testing. We have from now until February 9th to get everything in place. By February, right, we have to start the testing. So we have to get everything in place, ready and all. So we're in the phase of collecting the data.
Collecting the data is finding out whether or not people are vaccinated. Is that not a hipovirus?
It is not.
So are you, are you can ask me whether or not I've been vaccinated and that's not a hipovirus?
I'm not asking you, your, our HR department is.
But it's not, it's not a hipovirus if the HR department does it?
You can decline giving that information, but if you decline, you're considered unvaccinated.
So you do have a choice to whether you don't, I mean, if you don't want to tell people, you do. But then we have to treat you as an employee as you're unvaccinated, which then means, means that you have to mask while you're, as an employee here in the school district. And you have to go through the testing procedure that you would, would need to test every seven days. As it stands right now, and we'll see if it changes tomorrow.
So that if it changes, you said that, that it expires in May. So then if it expires in May, then we can take it, we can overturn the policy?
Correct. Or it may change tomorrow.
And if we don't, if we, if we don't adopt the policy today, then you said, you said we'll be penalized on February 9th?
What, what, what OSHA is saying to school districts and to businesses is that you need to be working in good faith towards this mandate, towards this policy. Putting it in good faith in front of the board right now is taking those steps that you are preparing, you are planning if this mandate comes to fruition. So that's why it's here tonight because of the fact that. So that's why it's here tonight, because of the fact that this is our board meeting. They told us to have it in front of your boards to develop, and you just kind of stay tuned on whether or not this will continue to come. The Supreme Court could rule and put a hold or a stop on things tomorrow, and then this will be done. But at the same time, this could be asked to just continue, and we'll make a ruling on it next month, or who knows what the next thing is. We're sitting here treading water a little bit on how to go, how to move forward when the Supreme Court still hasn't ultimately rendered their decision on what they're going to do. OSHA has put this stuff into play. It has been appealed by some local, is it local or is it district circuit?
There's 27 states that have appealed it, and they're the ones that had a lawsuit against.
Right. So we're just trying to do our best in making sure that we're complying with what OSHA is telling us that we have to do to go through and to make a safe work environment for everybody. And we get, we get it. I, your questions have been brought to my attention by other employees, and we've tried to answer them as respectfully as possible so that you just try to find this balance to make sure that you're, you're moving forward in good faith, preparing, and at the same time, being very respectful to everybody.
But I don't think it's being respectful. If you don't have to divulge your medical information, and you are making the assumption if I don't tell you that I haven't been vaccinated.
But don't say they as Chris Sanju, because that's not.
Okay, our HR department.
It's not even our HR department, this is the federal government.
But we have to let our HR department know whether or not we've been vaccinated so they can then ensure the federal government know. Right?
We're not going to tell the federal government who's vaccinated or not vaccinated. It's, what we then need to do is to tell those people, here are those precautions that you have to take to make sure that you're safe around other employers or other employees, which means if you're not vaccinated, here are the things that you're going to need to do, such as test and mask. Not my role.
The other thing we have to follow, if OSHA would call us tomorrow and ask for our plan and our process and where we're at, we've got four hours to supply that information. If we don't, we are fine. So we have to be out in some place. If we get reported by somebody and they call you, is that what you're doing? We have to do it.
And that would be one of those things that, and again, you know, depending on what type of things that they do, but if OSHA looked at you and says you don't have an adopted plan that, or an adopted policy that you put in front of the board, and you had an opportunity to put this in front of your board, and you chose not to do that, that would be something that you're not acting in good faith in terms of following through on the mandate that OSHA is putting out in front of you. And so, again, I get it. I get it all from everybody, and we're trying to find this balance, which is why it's, this whole thing is making it such a challenge. But this is something that we are required to do, which is why it's in front of you. If it changes tomorrow, it changes tomorrow, and then, and then we go down that path. But because of a board meeting here on January 10th, and you need to follow through and move forward with this, it's in front of you so that at least we've got our, our policy and our plan in place if this mandate continues to move forward.
Thank you for all the work on it. So I have a motion by Clark, second by Alicia, to approve and adopt policy 491, mandatory COVID-19 vaccination or testing and face covering. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Aye.
Item K, Second Reading of Policies, action item. The following policies received at first reading at the school board meeting is the recommendation of the policy committee director, Ken Wonker, and Superintendent San, Superintendent of Schools to adopt these policies. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by John, to adopt the listed policies above. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Item L, Resolution to Accept Donations, action item. Is the recommendation Superintendent Sanji to adopt the resolution to accept donations? Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
This is the motion made by Jason, second by Clark, to accept donations. Comments? Again, a little bit array of three committees there in our district, so thank you very much. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both miscellaneous, anything on this time? I don't see any. Uh, adjournment, a motion? Motion by Alicia, second by Clark, to adjourn at 8:37 P.M. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.